Ben is the secretary.
I'll nominate Roy and Ben to continue in those capacities. Okay? So you have nominations for Kevin Parsley to be chairman, continue to be as far as chairman, Roy Covert as vice chairman, and Secretary Ben Peters. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. So congratulations. Danny get to sign a lot of stuff again. All right, so there is one item that we will not hear this evening. It is R-21-04. This is Cadence Crossing by Brian and Melanie Moore Trusts. That has been tabled per applicant, so that will not be heard this evening. In case there's anyone in the audience that was here to... that had any comments on that, so.
Either will the preliminary plat or the variance.
Right. So the rezoning, the preliminary plat, and the variance, none of those will be heard in that whole piece on it, so. So I don't know if they can hear out there as far as all that I'm covering in that whole piece. So I don't know if any of those are here for that. Going to the tabled items, section C-21-01, we have Aiden Soto Rivera, 1210 to 1218 South Thompson Street, conditional use for use unit 52. Food truck court in a C-5 presented by Aiden Soto Rivera. Okay. Come back to that one later. The next tabled item is L-21-03 Stronghold Northwest Arkansas, 3095 Wagon Wheel Road. And then variance B-21-02 for deviation commercial design standards, multiple buildings in a commercial center, entryways and architectural features presented by Gavin Smith, Civil Engineering.
Hello, I'm Gavin Smith. Thanks for having us back. Stronghold, take two. So we tabled this project last time so that we could have an opportunity to speak with the planning staff about some of the variance items we had on there. We had several productive conversations and we got our very long list of variances down to two. And we feel that those are very particular to this site, not just to... but really related to the fact that we have an older building and these new buildings going in along with it. And, you know, we hope you'll agree with us on that. I hopefully have our architects Brett and Stacy Park on the Zoom meeting, and we have the owner here tonight. Oh, I don't think they managed to get on. They got the older link.
Did we send out the link to the new link to the professionals that were on the list?
I believe we're in the process of that.
Okay. Okay.
Staff comments?
One of the changes that you made was to put on the plan the existing canopy-
Yes.
-as part of the landscaping. Okay, that existing canopy is used to satisfy the vegetated screening requirements on the southern property line. It will be inspected at time of the certificate of occupancy to confirm compliance with the minimum standards.
Mm-hmm. Understood.
If they get taken down inadvertently or something, they'll have to be put back-
Yes.
...in order to do that, okay. Each principal building on a site shall have clearly defined, highly visible customer entrance features, any three of the following: canopies or porticos, overhangs or recesses, arcades or raised harness parapets over the door, peaked roof, forms or arches, outdoor patios, display integrated into the building structure. So you added canopies over each of the entrances?
No, those were in the original proposal. We handled this two different ways. We added some side amenities to the front of the existing building along the right-of-way, and we sort of brought that one up to code as a principal entrance to a principal building. And then these are not principal buildings, is one way to look at it. We've got two out of three amenities with the plantings adjacent to the doors and the canopies over the doors. And these are really sort of workspaces, employee entrances, located in the back of the complex of buildings, but we do have a sort of forward-facing business entrance on the existing building.
Okay, so you're still asking for a variance on that because each of those buildings, you're saying there's only one principal building and these are secondary buildings, but in essence they could be used as three separate uses if the property's sold.
you know, I can't speak to the future owner's intentions, only what we're doing right now and what we're proposing.
Okay, so what materials did you change on the outside of the building?
You know what? This is a sort of an architecture question, but if we can handle it this way, I'm happy to speak with them and I'm authorized if we couldn't make the communication work. Stucco and... was added in kind of a, you know, a changing pattern on the lower half of the building to meet that 51% threshold, I think, of metal paneling on the outside. So we have stucco on the bottom, metal paneling on the top.
And the actual length of the building is 99.6 feet.
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. Katie, are you online, see and tell us about the drainage issues?
Yes, I'm here. They put in a detention pond that discharges to the creek to the south of the property, and I don't think I have any further comments.
Thank you. You made a pedestrian access from the front building out to the sidewalk.
Yes.
You added landscaping around the parking lot on the principal building that you're saying's on the front.
Yeah, we actually kind of hugged the driveway and we hugged the parking lot. I mean, you can kind of see, we flanked the driveway on either side with plantings, and then we did frontage landscaping on the building.
And you have frontage landscaping on the two buildings in the back, correct?
Well, we have a foundation planting that goes the entire front.
And what central features did you add?
We put a bench and a bike rack in front of the building, kind of adjacent to the right-of-way between the entrance and the building.
Okay, what about the screening of the dumpster?
There's a dumpster screen now proposed, shown in the details, and you can kind of see it outlined below that tree right there.
Predominant color is gray and black with bright yellow doors.
I would call it orange, but...
But it says yellow on there, so, okay.
Yeah.
Entryway landscaping, screening. Did we get a lighting plan?
We produced one for photometrics off the building. It was never requested during the review. We can provide that, but we, you know, met kind of basic photometric requirements using wall pack lights along the front of the proposed buildings.
I don't have anything else.
Austin, did I miss anything?
No, I think that's it.
Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission.
Kevin?
Yes.
If I might, a point of clarification. On pages 68 and 69 of our packet, I'm showing variance requests all over the place. Are you seeing that as well, or is this dated, or am I wrong, or what?
This was their original request, this was in your packet. What we just went through is the changes they made to eliminate some of those.
Okay, so what I'm looking at is the original from last month.
Right. So they are saying they have created one customer entrance on all sides of the principal building directly facing the abutting public right-of-way by doing so with the building in the front, not each one of the other buildings.
Yeah.
Okay, they provided that pedestrian flow from that building on the front, not the new buildings. They've added the park bench or the bench and the bike racks as a central features, multiple buildings in the commercial center, they're not of similar material they're asking. That still is one of the variances because-
Correct.
-they have an older building in the front, and the rest of them are new buildings, and that's what the new ones are going to look like. They have screened the dumpster. The building is 99.6 feet long, not 100. We just talked about what the new building look... what the building materials are now. They have canopies over the entryway, they did landscaping in the front on the interway, by the parking lot in the front, there's none down here. They screened the trash dumpster. The existing buildings are on the site. What's happening with those?
There's no improvements proposed at this time, and they're eventually going to age out and be done with.
So do we have any timeframe of what that's going to be?
No, it's just eventually. I mean, they're useful right now for storage, and as they're not useful, they won't be rebuilt.
Okay. Can I answer your question?
Thanks.
Seems like there's going to have to be a lot of fill in the back. Is there anything from fire exits and things like that in the back that are necessary when you have a... if you have an incline like that?
Could I speak to that?
Sure.
Yeah, so you can see the slight tilt in the building. That was actually taking advantage of the native slope of everything to keep things mostly at grade and going with the drainage patterns and everything that you find there now. And if you'll go to the site plan, you'll see that we have the entire turning maneuver required by the fire code lined out right there for fire trucks that they can get back in there, because we're over the limit for dead end. We have to provide a turnaround, and we've provided that on the plan.
Yeah, my question is more on the... I guess since it's less than 100 feet, no requirement as far as fire exits in the back of the building, the south end? It's just a question I have.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, you were speaking about the building, I was talking about the site.
And do you have an answer to that? Does it need an exit in the back?
We don't anticipate any in the rear. You're what, 50 feet deep?
Yeah, a little bit less.
Yeah, 50 feet deep, yeah, you would be within 75 feet to pretty much any building, any door to the front there. As far as fire access, we... the buildings are small, so that turnaround and a little bit of a lane there that goes back to the east would provide fire access for the fire truck to get to the front of all buildings.
I'm not talking about the fire for the trucks, I'm talking about the actual building and as far as this...
Right, the buildings are only 50 feet deep and there's two doors in the front.
Okay.
So either they would have two doors in the front, or they only require to have one door if it's less than 75 feet, unless he wants to put a match factory in there or something like that.
Okay.
To be clear, we are not proposing to put a match factory.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the commission? The only comment I have, well, for one, I appreciate you guys addressing a lot of these, because it was incredibly excessive as far as the number of variances. I'm still struggling with some of the building materials in here, in that whole piece as far as, you know, especially with what a lot of other businesses in that area have done as far as even... the metal's fine, I don't have a problem with metal, but being able to do things as far as a different grade of metal or designs and things of that nature, it still has a lot of flavor as far as just a metal building in that whole piece. That's just my piece on it. any other comments or questions? If not, we've got two variances on here and those will be a call for the vote.
Can we take them together?
That's fine, if everyone's good with taking the variances together. Okay. Call for the vote on the variances. Call for the vote by Mr. Covert on both variances together.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
No.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker? Peyton, are you muted?
Thumbs up or thumbs down?
Can you give me a thumbs up or thumbs down, Peyton?
Do y'all have him muted?
I can't see him.
I can see him, I don't think he's hearing us.
I don't know if he's... he says he can't hear us.
He can't hear us.
Ben, can he hear us?
I don't think Ben can hear us either.
He's saying that we're muted, he can't hear us.
We can't hear anything on Zoom.
Okay, can you now?
The chamber's Zoom profile is muted.
Can we unmute the chamber?
Still muted.
Try now.
I can hear you now.
There we go.
Which... where did you stop hearing us, Peyton?
Good question. I don't know, I don't know.
The last thing I heard, Chairman, was you saying you still had a problem with the materials.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and then we had a call for the vote by Mr. Covert and taking both variances together unless you guys had any comments.
That's fine with me.
Okay.
That's fine. What were the two variances? Can we restate those?
Multiple buildings in a commercial centers, and then you had as far as, well, you're probably looking for a deeper description of what's on here in this whole piece, so...
The two that are left is they want the front building to be considered as the principal building and not the second building, the two in the back being considered as... so they don't have to have principal entrances and they don't have to entryways and architectural features. They did all that on the front building only.
Could I add like a little correction to that? We did two out of three on the back buildings.
Okay.
You added canopies. Do you have canopies on the... or awnings over the doors, and what's the other one?
Adjacent plantings.
That's a separate item.
That's not a...
We just have the canopy.
You should probably have Debbie read the vote.
They're... one of the principal entrance amenities that are required in the commercial design standards are plantings adjacent to the entrances, right?
That's correct.
That's what I'm speaking about.
That's a separate item within the commercial design standards.
That's entryway landscaping, that's not an amenity.
I'm sorry, this is, you know...
Okay, those are the two variances, we don't have to go through all the details. That's the two variances they're asking for.
And so Peyton, we're to you as far as a vote.
Vote is four to one, four yes, one no, up to this point?
Yes, it's Peyton's turn.
It's my turn, okay. I vote yes.
Parsley?
No.
Peters?
No.
Tyler?
Yes.
This passes six-three.
I didn't vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, Shannon, you're on here. Oh, I put you down as yes. Did you say yes?
I didn't.
Okay, what are you telling me?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Passes six-three. And large-scale, do I have a motion? Question to approve large-scale, asked from by Mr. Covert. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tyler.
Compton?
No.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
No.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
No.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Large-scale passes seven-two.
Seven.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See, next item on the agenda, we have a waiver, W-21-01 Trey Thompson, 4078 Carriage Crossing Lane, waiver sidewalk requirement presented by Trey Thompson and Connor Holmes. Do I have anyone online for this one?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
I'm Thomas Connor.
Okay. Can you tell me a little bit about what you're looking for?
Okay, basically, we're building a house there for Matt Mindy Rael, and we are trying to get out of putting a sidewalk in there because there's nothing really to attach the sidewalk to. Basically, if you can see that plot 2262, there has no sidewalk going down the south side of the property. I currently live at 4144, which I've got a sidewalk that basically ends there, so we were just basically going to try to get a waiver not to do a sidewalk there, just to approach and driveway.
So how wide of an area do you have along the street?
It's probably about 100 foot, 120 foot of frontage on our property.
Okay, and you have a driveway that comes through there?
Yeah, we'll have a driveway that we've cleared out before, you can't see it on this map here, but it's going to be over toward the east side of the property line on Carriage Crossing.
Okay, but your sidewalk would connect to the one that's to the west?
No, I would prefer not to because we basically have electric heater or electric boxes and stuff there that we would have to detour around and it would look mighty funky, excuse my language.
And then you'd have a second driveway cut into 4102.
Yes, yes. That they've got an easement, I guess, to put in.
Well, I can tell you, staff does not support this waiver. The sidewalk needs to be built.
Any questions or comments from the audience?
This is a recommendation to council.
It's to the commission. A recommendation?
Well, you can recommend a waiver, or you can recommend it, they have to do it and it goes to council with that recommendation, or payment in lieu of, those are the other options.
Chairman, I recommended me move forward to council with a denial.
With it, say that again.
With the denial of the waiver.
I'll second.
I have a recommendation for denial by Mr. Covert. I have a second by Mr. David. So for clarity, a yes vote on this would be to deny, ask it to be denied.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
The recommendation to deny this waiver is at a vote of nine-zero.
This will be presented to council on February the 23rd.
All right. Next section is rezoning. We have a rezoning for R-21-03 Mary Lee Phillips Trusts, Starbucks 408 South Thompson Street from C-2 to C-5. And we'll also have a variance on this, 21-12 variance for deviation commercial design standards for entrances, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jason Apple with ESI. This is the old highway liquor store there at Maple and 71B, requesting a rezone to C-5 from C-2. And a little on the variance side, so we're going through an large-scale process to have a drive-through Starbucks at this location, and we have one customer entrance on the project and not two as required. And I'll answer any other questions.
Staff comments?
On the rezoning, the rezoning request is... let me back up. The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates downtown district for this area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Protect the positive aspects of neighborhood character throughout the city, appropriate locations... no, I have... those are the wrong ones. This is a commercial piece of property and is recommended because of providing commercial spaces in the downtown area. The variance request, this is one that they only have one entrance, and this is drive-in facility only.
Correct.
And so they're not... they don't need two principal entrances, and that's the variance request, so the zoning request is recommended for approval and so is the variance request.
So the variance would be for no access on Maple?
Only one principal entrance.
Okay.
Right, which would be on the Thompson side, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission.
I just want to make sure I heard that correctly. This is a drive-through only?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe that's...
There will be a little like outdoor seating associated near there, but there won't be like physical access into the store.
I think that's how Starbucks is moving all their formats on it, so... Okay. So rezoning, any questions or comments from the commission? It's be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Dr. Compton.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Rezoning passes nine-zero. Call for the vote for the variance?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mr. Covert.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Variance passes nine-zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance to go to council on the 23rd.
Next item, R-21-05... I'm going to pronounce this wrong. Chenkad LLC, Rosedale Heights, 529 East Don Tyson Parkway from A1 to SF3. Preliminary plat 21-02, southwest corner of Don Tyson and South Powell, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jason Apple with ESI. This property is located at the southwest corner of Don Tyson and Powell, not directly on the corner, it's a little shape as you can see. We're requesting this piece of property be rezoned to SF3. Currently, the property just south of there is also SF3, and I'll answer any other questions.
Staff comments?
The comprehensive land use plan indicates low density residential use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies- The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan and is recommended for approval. Protect the positive aspects of neighborhood character throughout the city. Appropriate locations for single-family and multifamily residential development should be provided based on accessibility, site suitability, utility availability, neighborhood compatibility, and environmental factors. Sure adequate land allocations for residential purposes by providing lots of adequate size.
You have anything on the preliminary plat?
Um, you wanna vote on that first and then go to the preliminary plat, or do you wanna do it all at once?
Come back to that.
Okay.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission? Should be a call for the vote for the rezoning?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mr. Covert.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Rezoning passes nine, zero. Now, the preliminary plat, any staff comments?
Uh, the only comment we have is there's some signature blocks on page two that need to be removed on the, on the plat itself. Katie, do you have any engineering comments?
Yes, I have one question. It looked like there was a phase line. What is the purpose of the phasing there? Or is there some, are there some improvements that aren't gonna be done in phase one? I was a little confused about that.
I think they're mislabeled, or obviously, the eastern part has to be built first as phase one, and the rest would be phase two. So, I believe the intent would be to get the first two lots available and then proceed with the remainder of construction.
The two lots being those directly off of Powell Street?
Off of Powell, yes.
Okay, it was my understanding that you're gonna start on the other side, but you have to build all the access into it.
You gotta build the road into there first.
You gotta build the road, you gotta get the detention in there in order to be able to make the whole work. Is there really a need for a phase line?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Okay. My other comments were that a modified curb is needed at the drive, and then we'll just need to determine if there is an existing street light that will satisfy that requirement, or else you'll just have to provide a street light on Powell.
Do you know if there's one on Powell Street?
I didn't see one when I looked at Google Street View. I don't know if that was completely up to date, though.
No problem.
Is that it? Any questions?
That's all from me.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission? Should be a motion?
Subject to staff comments, yes.
Do I have a motion? Motion to approve subject to staff comments. Motion by Mr. Covert, a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Mueller.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Preliminary plat passes nine, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, R-21-06, Saul and Daris Calderon from A1 to C2. Also, large-scale, 21-11, 3161 North Thompson Street, presented by Million Miracle Surveying, Eric Heller. I believe Eric's on the Zoom call. Do we have Eric online?
No. Do we have Eric Heller online?
I can represent if he's on.
Yeah, he's saying that he doesn't have him on. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. First, we have to know who you are and whether you're authorized to represent. You're the owner?
Yes.
Okay, never mind, go ahead.
I'm John Starnes. I'm the architect of the project. Saul Calderon is there, the owner of the project. The, uh, the, I believe we satisfied all the comments, at least to my knowledge, and we're just here to field any, any questions that you guys have. We're applying for the large-scale approval and a rezone of the property.
Staff comments?
Uh, on the rezoning request, I'll take my finger with my mask on, that's a problem. The comprehensive land use plan indicates regional commercial use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Protect the positive aspect of neighborhood character throughout the city. Appropriate locations for single-family, uh, we got, we got them backed up again. It is commercial. That is a commercial area, is recommended for approval.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission? This is on the rezoning from A1 to C2. There'd be a call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mrs. Mueller.
Peters?
Recuse.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes, we have eight yes and one recuse.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 23rd for the rezoning.
Staff comments on large scale?
Uh, all comments from other utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval of construction plans. Underground utilities for anything that's, excluding everything that's 12KV and above. The existing mature canopy shown to be preserved will be inspected at the time of the certificate of occupancy to confirm compliance with minimum perimeter landscaping requirements. All external walkways shall be distinguished from driving surfaces through the use of durable, low-maintenance surface materials such as pavers, bricks, or scored concrete to enhance pedestrian safety and comfort, as well as the attractiveness of the walkways. Signs shall be installed to designate pedestrian walkways. We, the only thing that we don't have on the commercial design standards is the percentage of materials. Did you provide that for us of what's the, what's the principal material on this building?
Uh, if you'll flip to the elevation pages in the lower right corner. Um, I can't quite remember the percentages off the top of my head, but it's, it's brick and stone are the primary materials.
So, I want to make a quick comment on this. We received these this afternoon, and I just want to point out that we have masonry siding listed as one of the predominant materials here, and on the actual elevations, we're calling out prefabricated metal panels. So, there's a little bit of discrepancy there, and we're just looking for some clarification on that.
Okay, yeah, Eric was asking me about that, and I was unsure of what the clarification was. There will not be metal panels on the building. It will be the, the masonry siding. I can resubmit a different revision to that if needed. And really, to be honest with you, we are, whatever, you know, pleases the council is fine with us, or the commission, rather, on the material.
Katie, do you have any engineering comments?
My only comment was regarding the driveways. Since this is on 71B, you'll just need to coordinate with RDOT. I think it was showing our typical commercial drive, but typically, RDOT will require a DR1, so you'll just have to ask them what they want there.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Motion subject to staff comments.
Motion subject to staff comments. Motion by Mr. Covert, a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Compton.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Recuse.
I have eight yes and one recuse. This passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, good to council. Next item, R-21-07, David and Natasha Harris, 964 North Maestry Road, from A1 to C2, presented by Tyler Carter and Bob Dunham.
You mind if I have that up?
Can I have something as well? Thanks, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have enough?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Tell us a little bit about this.
So, this is a four-acre parcel, just over four acres on North Maestry Road, 112, right at Harbor High School. With the expansion of 112 and the other areas around it, we're just wanting to get it zoned over to a C2 property rather than the A1 that it is currently. And the property is, it's up for sale right now, and it's under contract, and this is just part of the due diligence period that we, we have going on with it.
I'm here representing the buyer. What he's planning on putting here, I know this is preliminary, but he was, wanted to put in a, a rounded 8,000 square foot office, and that was gonna have four units in it. And one of the tenants was gonna be Boone Ritter, and, and his office was Don Peters Construction. Then he's having an electric company go in and another office. There's no sewer there. You can't put in safety because the ground's been excavated. So, he's gonna have to run sewer all the way from Benedetto going west all the way down. So, it's gonna cost him a good amount of money to do this, but he's willing to do that. So, he can't do less than 8,000 square feet and come out economically to build this office building.
Staff comments?
Are you proposing to rezon the property on the south side of Harbor to C2 as well, that little triangle piece on that end?
Well, it's all part of that. Unfortunately, when that, when, I'm sorry. Unfortunately, when they put Harbor in there, it should have been, in my opinion, it should have been made a separate parcel, but it wasn't. So, that last parcel to the south on the north side of Harbor is the same parcel on the south side of Harbor.
But my question is, would you want to rezon only the north half and not the south half?
Yes, ma'am. And with, if you look on with the proposed 112 expansion as well, that, that south parcel, it's gonna be taken up mainly by a roundabout, if you look in, in that packet I gave you. You know, that, that south parcel is really not even gonna be able to be used. And with it having a traffic light there, 11,000 cars a day, obviously, the city's already planning on that being a commercialized area with the expansion. It's on the trucking route. Within, you know, a quarter mile of, down the road, there's a C5 property. So, you know, we just feel like it's gonna be commercialized anyway, eventually, and obviously, everybody's already planning on that. So, we would like to be the first, you know, and go ahead and get it started. And it was just, I think it'd be a great, great thing for the city, you know, just to get it, get it going.
Patsy, is, from the buyer's standpoint, that's not gonna, that, that part, that, that bottom piece is, is gonna be worthless to us because it's gonna be taken up mainly by the roundabout?
Well, there's, the decision has not been made that that roundabout's gonna stay at that location. There has some, been some discussion about whether or not it needs to be moved, or the road needs to be extended further on, so, you know, that's their, one of their alternatives is to put a roundabout at that location.
So, I guess as it stands, you know, they're representing the seller, so, uh, as it stands, I guess we'd have to make that because it's all one parcel.
The adopted comprehensive land, land use plan shows low-density residential use for the property. The rezoning request is not in keeping with the comprehensive land use plan and is not recommended for approval. A downgrade to an O1 neighborhood office district would allow for the construction of a structure not to exceed 5,000 square feet in a design that complements the surrounding developments and serves as a buffer. This rezoning, this property will also have to be concurred with, by the city of Tonti Town, and I don't believe, is it more than 1,000 feet to the closest commercial zone on the Tonti Town side?
It was about two-tenths of a mile or whatever that is from the, it's where those-
It's where all the, uh, storage buildings are to the south of there.
I don't, I don't know what the distance is. I didn't look that, but we will, we will have to have Tonti Town's concurrence before the city of Springdale can, can rezon it, too, so.
So, what do you, what does that mean? I mean-
Well, it'll have to be submitted to the city of Tonti Town, and they'll have to, by resolution, tell us whether or not they concur in rezoning that piece of property to a commercial zone or not.
Does that come after you approve or disapprove, or?
Well, whatever we do with it here, we'll let them know. If, if the planning commission turns it down, you'll have to appeal it to city council. If the planning commission approves it, then it has to go to Tonti Town before it can officially be-
Okay.
-rezoned.
Can you go through the C2, says what's acceptable use units in it?
A C2 allows for citywide public uses by rights, cultural, recreational, and health facilities, office studios and related services, eating places, neighborhood shopping goods, other shopping goods, trades and services, automotive services, parking lots, temporary buildings, transportation services, healthcare clinic, and an indoor flea market. Conditional uses include recycling collection facilities, monopole or self-supporting tower, auction houses, temporary classrooms, automobile sales, church or synagogue, mobile vending, and commercial assembly.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
I have a question. So, the, the proposed plan is to put offices in, which I personally support. I don't see any issue with that, creating a, you know, compatibility issue with the surrounding property. But I think the issue is that O1 restricts the total building size to 5,000 square feet. Am I right on that?
Correct.
Is there a way that we could, if the applicant was willing, to apply for O1 and get a variance on the square footage requirement? Is that a possibility?
Usually, you can get a variance for something like that. I mean, you'd apply for it. The other option would be to a neighborhood commercial, which is a C1, which would allow for cultural, recreational, and health facilities, office studios and related services, eating places, neighborhood shopping goods, parking lots, and a healthcare clinic. The thing it takes out is that trades and services. Didn't you say you had-
An electrical company. Electrical company.
An electrical company can go into a C1, though.
But just offices, right? Or, or?
Yes, just offices for that electrical company.
Are they gonna store, uh, materials on site and have a vehicle that they park their vehicle in?
I doubt it. Whether they may have, you know, what their plan is. This is the buyer, Don Peters.
I want to build my office there.
You know, I started here in Springdale and been wanting to move back to Springdale. My office has been in Cave Springs for quite some time. And as you know, the, the cost to build right now is rather exorbitant. Also, the cost of land is very expensive. So, I have teamed up with other Springdale businesses, Brian Clink Scales of Boone Ritter Insurance, Criterion Electric, and also Meadows Pet Resort to go in there and build, we're wanting to say 12,000 square foot, not 8,000, but a 12,000 square foot modern office facility. My old customers, or the old Walmart guys and stuff, they liked the fact that I had my office built on the side of a Dollar General that I owned. And they thought I was keeping my, my overhead low. And they, they really liked that. But their grandchildren don't like it so much, you know? And so, if we're going to stay relevant, the, the other three businesses and I, that we need to upgrade our facilities to something more modern looking. And Bob found that facility for me. He thought it would work really good for me because right now, it, it's not a landfill, but they mind that. There's 22 feet of cut, straight wall right there. And he thought because of my propensity to do work and, and stuff like that, that I might be able to make this property work. And, and which I can. I'm willing to bring in almost 2,000 lineal feet of sewer and build a sewer system or a lift station and upgrade another lift station to do so. But we're approaching the top of my, my ability to afford this. And so, we do need the whole enchilada or not at all, I guess, is what I'm saying. We're not planning on storing anything there. I want a modern looking facility. But now, if, like if Jordan wants to put some electrical supplies inside his building in the backside and go around back and load out in the mornings with a pickup truck, I don't have a problem with, with him doing that as an owner. So, I'm telling you what we're doing. That way, if you have any issues, shoot it down now, so I can go on and do something else. But no, we do need the zoning to C2 for the Meadows Pet Resort. And we do not plan on stacking anything outside. The whole reason that I sold my property out there and, and moving to this is so I can build a modern looking facility with modern architecture so that we can stay current with what is going on in northwest Arkansas.
Thank you.
I have to remind you, though, we are not rezoning it for his plan. Once you rezone it to C2, anything that's allowed in that zone can go in that location, so.
And if I could, real quick, just to piggyback off Mr. Peters' comment, you know, they have, they have excavated a lot of the land out of there. And now, it's more of just a dirt lot. And people will go in there and they dump tires, they leave trash there all the time. My client bought it a couple of years ago just as a future project. And this was before the 112 expansion that came along or anything like that. And now, it's really, I mean, if you, you want to talk about an eyesore, I mean, it is a, it's not very good looking now. And like I said, people use it as, somebody's been dumping tires there for a couple of years now. So, we could either leave it as a dirt lot or actually make something out of it that, you know, the future plans of Springdale are accommodating. So, I would like your consideration on that.
Yeah, so let me explain why I was, why I was asking that question is because I was following right up, right along until we got to the point about if somebody wants to load things out of the back in, in their pickup truck, that isn't office. So, that's what I'm trying to determine for myself is, is the application said we want office space. And I am in full support of a nice, modern office. But when we start talking about yet, but, if he wants to load stuff out of the back and store stuff, so that doesn't align with what I see the vision for that area to be or the land use plan. So, that's why I'm asking, but that's why I'm also, I understand we're not rezoning it for the project, but I'm not, I don't want to mislead the buyer to think that it's office space plus we can store stuff in the back and have trades and services out of there. If we're going to do office, I just want it to be very clear that it's office. So, that's why I was, that's why I was asking, and personally, that's where the line is for me. I'm in full support of a nice, modern building there with, with office space, but not trades and services there yet.
So, to go along with what Peyton just mentioned on there, so, O1 and even the C1 would... The, the, the issue with O1 is, is that you'd have to have a variance of the square footage. A C1 for office would be fine. It does eliminate the trade services as far as in a C1.
But I think a C1 also has a 10,000 square foot requirement. So, I couldn't remember if he said, and he was planning on 12,000 square feet, but it would also require a variance there too.
Yes, he did, he did say 12,000.
Would you be willing to change it to a C1?
Well, I'm not sure, I don't, I'm not sure if C1 covers what he's wanting to do.
It will not cover the trades and services. That's not a permitted use in a C, in a C1 zone.
What, what use in a C2 do, do you see as being a problem at this location? It's, like you said, there's a big dirt wall on the backside and state highway in the front. So, I guess I'm trying to understand what's, what's in C2 that would be so objectionable.
I guess it's the timing for me, right? We're, we're, there is no roundabout there, there is no work being done on, so, everything's still in the planning stage. So, I even would support C2. Not right now because I don't feel like we're there yet. But that's why, you know, that's why we're talking about today, February 2nd, that's what I feel comfortable with. And I, I totally think it will get to C2. But are we talking about 18 months or seven years? I, I don't, I don't know. And so, I can't, that's my issue. It's not, it's not really the use, it's the timeline.
Let me clarify. When I spoke, I didn't intend, or it, I wasn't speaking that there would be onsite storage outside. If, I was thinking if Jordan had materials and he had a service van, that he pulls up to a garage door out to the back and he loads, you know, breakers and lights into that service van, then that may be so. But our whole, our whole reason for needing C2 is for the Meadows Pet Resort. My office is going to be 4,000 feet. Brian Boone Ritter's office is going to be 4,000 feet. Meadows Pet Resort is going to be for, or let's see, one of them's three, Brian's is going to be 3,000, Meadows is 4,000, and then I think Jordan's is going to be 2,000 feet, actually for 13,000 feet, I think is the correct way of, of just letting you know, if, if the zoning is changed and I purchase the property, which I, this is the condition on my contract that I have on the property, then this is, you know, that's, that's the intent in our use for the property, so.
Okay. Thank you so much.
And I, I want, so, it sounds like the square footage around the occupancy is the main driver? Am I understanding that? Or is it the customer mix?
Well, the square footage is fine on a C1.
For the buyer's needs?
It's, it's more as far as the trade services piece.
Trades and services is not allowed in a C1. An electrical contractor's office is usually as a trades and services, which is a use unit 21, not a use unit 16.
If, if there are some other commissioners that feel different, I, I'd love to hear, you know, I'd love to hear everybody's thoughts on this.
Well, I will say that I think this property is, is hard to develop. And I have to agree with Ben. I don't see why C2 can't go there. The way it is now, it is an eyesore.
I agree. Shannon's an appraiser. I mean, I, I, I take her, I took her opinion with weight. If anybody else wants to say something, I'm, I'm listening, you know?
I mean, I, I think everyone wants this to work in, in that whole piece. But we've been here before and it sells, and then all of a sudden, something else goes in there, and it's bound to the C2. I think that's, you know, what Peyton was bringing up is, is some valid points as far as, we, we don't know when 112 is going to really, truly have the improvements that are done in, in that whole piece. And even if they start it, we're talking years as far as, in, in, in the whole piece there. So, it's just an observation, it's awareness. I, I don't know that it's more of an opinion at, at this. It's just, we've been here before in, in this whole piece. And so...
So, Chairman, let me ask a quick question. If we, if this was switched to a C1, then we would need to do a variance on the square footage allowed from...
No, the square footage is more of an issue with an O1. An O1, I think it was anything above 5,000 would have to be a variance in, in that whole piece.
And Mr., Mr. Chairman, that goes kind of back to my question to the buyer. It sounds like he needs a square footage to make the project work, but I don't know how important that customer is in terms of whether we go O1 and try and give them the square footage or, or something along that line.
I just don't know that the O1 would work. I mean, that's where C1 was, because then you don't have this, he'll meet the square footage piece in the C1. But it's more as far as the trades and services that becomes an issue in that whole piece. That's the fun, that's the big difference between the C1 and C2 is having those trades and services. Now, you also do have auction houses and many other, as far as components that can be in a C2. It's just an awareness. That's, I just wanted to make sure. Anytime we have circumstances like this, it's important for everyone to understand the use units that can go in these different locations. Quite honestly, it's something I haven't liked as far as number of use units. When you get into commercial properties, it gets very broad in some of these. And it puts us into challenges that, that we're facing right here in this whole piece.
Yeah, and I would tend to agree just about what the future uses of the property could be when it's completely open and would obviously feel more comfortable. I, I love the project and love what the vision is for it. If there are a way to get it, you know, keep it office, but get the square footage where, where it would be palatable for the buyer.
So, Bob, would you like to table this and talk with your client about moving some of the players around to where it would all fit into a...
Only if it's going to fail.
Yeah, so I, I think I've heard a lot in clear, that they want to hear this as far as...
I don't think, I don't think the law wants to table it.
I think, the only reason I ask that question is I think, I think, you know, for the record, we, we're bound by what the code is, right? What the, what the laws are. And so, if we're, if we're going to vote on this, I think we all love the project, we'd all like to see that succeed under its current terms and what you have and what you want to put in there. I don't know that that's a possibility.
The only thing I'd say about that is, you have, what I relate to, like a judge, you have to make your own decisions, lots of black and white. Things aren't black and white. So, this is a situation, I think, that falls into that category. And I think, given what this property looks like now and given what we think the future's going to be, to me, it's a good decision.
Yeah. I don't think we disagree with that. I think we're bound by what the zones are. And I think, you know, whatever there, whatever the zoning laws are, we have to abide by those. We don't just get to take, make them up as we go.
Well, I'd also like to, everybody to keep in mind that this is one of the busiest parts of 112 that there is. You know, you have 11,000 cars daily average through that area. You know, it's right there next to Harbor. I mean, it's going to be, I mean, it's going to be commercialized eventually. I mean, there's just, there's no way around it, especially with expanding that road like it is. It's at a three-way traffic light. Every variance that they've came up with as far as with that roundabout, on every one of those appendixes, it's the exact same as from what they've proposed. So, you know, it's either leave it a dirt lot for another five years or, you know, we have a ready, able and willing buyer to develop the property and make it something special, you know? And that's just going to bring in, you know, more businesses to that area, you know? So, I, I just, I see it, it being a start of developing 112 and just like, you know, just like everybody's already approved on it, you know? Rather than being a dirt lot and a tire dump, having some nice residential, or having some nice office spaces there.
Let, let me just make sure, was there any questions or comments from the audience on this one? Okay, I'll, I'll turn it over to the commission if there's any additional on there. I know we've kind of got into it a little bit, so...
Yeah, I'm sorry. I have one more question. And I'm just trying to find a way to make, like we talked about, the, the zoning, the use units fit what the, what the buyer really wants that property to be. So, I, I've got one more question. If they would request a C1 zoning, could they get a conditional use for the one tenant that does the dog grooming or the, you know, whatever, overnight, you know, dog boarding or whatever that was?
You cannot give, you cannot give a variance to allow a use that's not otherwise allowed in a zone. Variances cannot be, cannot be given for that.
Okay.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but like I said, this is kind of the due diligence period of this. You know, obviously, like I said, I'm the seller, or I'm the, I'm representing the seller on this. Whenever he has his actual plans drawn up, then there's a whole nother process, correct? I mean, so the building would have to be approved before he could break ground and actually build the building.
Yeah, and that's true, but we're still talking about what kind of uses are going in there regardless of what the building looks like.
Yes, ma'am. And, you know, but, but there would also, like Mr. Kevin said, that, you know, we don't know what it's going to be later on or if it gets approved as this and then somebody builds something else there, you know? That would have to be a whole nother process anyway.
Yeah, and, and it's just an awareness in here. Whenever we hear as far as rezonings, you know, we do appreciate you guys divulging as far as what you want to do with that. But normally, we don't know in, in, in those types of things. And that's where I was bringing up that, you know, we've been in this circumstance too before, where amazing development to go into that location. And we rezoned and it didn't go through. And the, and the property, I don't remember if it sold or is for sale or anything like that. Now, it's bound to as far as those new zoning requirements, but has a lot of flexibility as far as what can go in, into some of those locations. So, it's just an observation and awareness piece.
I just wanted to add one thing. I don't know if it means anything or not, but Mr. Peters wants to be back in Springdale. Brian Clink Scales wants to stay in Springdale. There's another property just a little south of there, about a mile or so, that's in Tonnit Town. Economically, this property balances out even though the price of the land's higher, but it already has sewer on it. So, economically, and it's probably a little better location than this, but he wants to...
And I understand that.
Wants to be in Springdale.
I, I, and we, we appreciate that completely. And, and we definitely want to continue to promote business in there. That that you're bringing up is, is really more of a buyer's decision in that whole piece. This is about a rezoning in it, okay? But any other comments or questions?
I have one more comment.
Yes?
The other option would be come in as a C4, a planned commercial district, would you tell us exactly what you're going to use it for and that's all it can be used for? That's your other option. But you will have to have a plan laid out that shows how all of the commercial uses is going to be restricted to and what the buildings are going to look like. And if you want to come back, then we know exactly what we're getting in a planned commercial district.
So, in that situation, if one of the, let's say the electrical guy moves out of that space, what happens with that?
Well, if, if you cage it as broad as it's trades and services, it could be electrical, it could be a plumbing.
Oh.
It would be that kind of uses. It's these uses that you're restricting this piece of property to, and that's all it can be used for. Which means in the future, you couldn't put a restaurant in there if you didn't tell us up front. You couldn't change it to a church. You couldn't put automotive services or anything like that, depending on which use units you tell us on the front end.
But they could come back and have it rezoned to C2 later, right, Patsy?
They could. And have that restriction removed. That's your other option if you wanted to do that.
So, C4 would get the, get the ball rolling and later on, if the tenant mix changed, they could at that point request it be zoned, rezoned to C2?
They could. But right now, we can't hear the C4 tonight because it hasn't been advertised that way. And we don't know what use units he wants to restrict it to in writing except what he told us at the, at the podium. So, that's an option too.
Or you can hear it as is.
You can hear it as a C2. If the planning commission denies it, you appeal that decision to the city council. If the city council does, upholds the planning commission's decision, you have to wait a year before you can ask for a C2 again. That's the, that's the timeframe. You could go to a C1 or a C4 if you wanted to, if it, if the C2 is denied all the way through council.
I think the buyer wants to say with the C2.
Can I ask a question? And also believe it's kind of a timing deal. Like I said, we're already under contract on it. We're just in our due diligence period right now. And I, I believe it's more of a timing deal with him as well, you know, because we can't string it on forever, you know?
I understand.
So, that's, that's kind of why we're here today.
I understand.
Yes, sir.
Just a question on what you said, Patsy, and I want to be sure I, I heard it right. If, if the C2 is heard tonight and denied, appealed to the council and denied, they would not have to wait a year to come back and ask for a C4?
No. They just can't ask for a C2 again for a year.
Okay. That's what I thought. I was going to be sure. Pat is right.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the, the planning commission?
Call for the vote.
Not this, but call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mr., Mr. Tyler. Did you have some?
I just added one quick question. So, you do want it heard as a C2. You do not want to talk to your client about a possible C4, is that correct?
He still wants to do the C2.
Okay. Just want to make sure I have your, you on the record.
Yes, sir. I'm just the passenger.
No worries. All right, so, call for the vote by Mr. Tyler.
Austin?
Hello.
Compton?
Yes.
Kelvert?
Yes.
David?
David?
Yes.
Yes.
Parker?
No.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
This rezoning passes 7-2.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 23rd.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We appreciate you and your client's patience on this.
I appreciate your time. You have a good evening.
Next item, R21-08, Brian and Shannon Passmore, 7132 Burrow Road, rezoning from A1 to SF1. There's also tandem lot split for an SF1, C21-04, and then a variance for deviation of paved driveway requirements, presented by Brian and Shannon Passmore. Any comments that you have on this one?
Excuse me?
Do you have any comments on this, or just?
Oh, just what we're doing. We're just trying to give my daughter an acre of land to build a house for. One of the things we put in was a variance for a pavement, or not had to pave the driveway. We got a variance, and I think it was in 2010, to do our own. You know, they approved it then, and we just kind of want to do the same. I built a gravel road going into our property that wanted to hold what needs to be held, and I would just extend it on to her house.
Okay. Very good. Staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates low-density residential use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Protect the positive aspects of neighborhood character throughout the city. Appropriate locations for single-family and multifamily. Residential development should be provided and ensure adequate land allocation for residential purposes by providing lots of adequate size. Now, the issue that we have to know is that one acre will handle a septic tank. Have you already had it parked?
Well, we actually have, we're tying it into the city sewer.
Oh, I forgot. You told me that.
Yeah. Yeah, we've got two locations, one where the water's coming from and the sewer's going to.
Okay. You need to check that with Springdale Water, because I think there was still a question about how you were gonna get sewer to it. And then on the tandem lot, I think it, the comments on the tandem lot, the variance request, they're asking to waive paving requirements. And when talking with Mr. Passmore, I think his concern is if it's paved, it will look like it's in access to the lake, and it's really not in access to the lake. And so keeping it gravel may discourage others from using it to get to the lake, too. So that's the only comment.
At this point, extremely difficult to keep people out of our house as it is. The thing in pavement, it'll just, they'll just be on in there even more. I mean, it's Saturdays, it's just a circle drive for everybody, and, you know, it kind of kills our privacy, obviously.
Yeah. I can understand that. Any questions or comments from the audience to the commission? We do the rezoning first. That'd be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mr. Covert.
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Zoning passes 9-0. Tandem lot splits. This'd be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mr. Covert on the tandem lot split.
A call for the vote.
Mr. Covert.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Tandem lot split passes 9-0. The variance will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mr. Covert.
David?
No.
Mueller?
Yes.
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 Okay. Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Variance passes 8-1.
Staff will prepare the ordinance and the resolution to go to council on the 23rd.
I'm sorry.
Staff will prepare the ordinance for the rezoning and the resolution for the tandem lot to go to council on the 23rd.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Last rezoning, R21-09, Jackie and Sheri Moore, 3300 Clyde Lane, from A1 to SF2, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jason Apple with ESI. We are requesting this piece property to be rezoned SF2 from A1. I'll answer any questions. Staff comments?
Comprehensive land use plan indicates low-density residential use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Protect the positive aspects of neighborhood character throughout the city. Appropriate locations for single and multifamily residential development. Ensure adequate land allocation for residential purposes by providing lots of adequate size.
Any questions or comments in the audience? Yes, if you'll come up to the mic and state your name and address, please.
My name's Marilyn Neal, and I'd like...
Can you pull that mic down? Sorry.
My name's Marilyn Neal, and I have property adjacent to it. And I must say that I never was notified that there was a public hearing or a rezoning on this.
Okay, I think we looked into this issue, and the address that is on the county record for the property is where the notice was sent.
Well, I've gotten from Terminella, when he rezoned it, I got the right address. I got it when Box Enterprise rezoned, I got it. So, and that's a 15-year-old address.
Okay, we have the certified list of adjacent property owners by the, by a, who certified the list? Surveyor?
Well, I'm just saying that I'm disappointed in how it was handled. My questions are, is SF4, how many houses can be put on that?
It's SF2, and it's four units per acre.
And does that include townhouses, duplexes, or what variance do we have there?
It includes single-family homes. Hold on a second. An SF2. And it was sent to you at an address on Liberty, where you showed it to me just a minute ago, at 3248 Liberty Avenue?
I live on Liberty, but that's the wrong address. It hasn't been that address for 15 years. And I get, I get tax takes once every year from the courthouse with the correct address.
Okay, all I can tell you, it was certified by a surveyor. That, I mean, they did what they were supposed to. They certified the list.
Well, that's your opinion. I didn't get the letter as the correct address.
Well, obviously, you know about the hearing because you're here, but the SF2 zone...
Yeah, by the word of mouth.
The SF2 zone allows for single-family homes and a home office. That's the only thing that's in citywide. Public uses by right are the only three permitted zone, uses in that SF2.
So no duplexes, or?
No duplexes. Nothing but a single-family home.
Now, my next question is, is there gonna be a street put in there, and will sidewalks and curbing and all that be required? Is this gonna be a subdivision?
Well, at the time, all we're redoing it is for single-family homes. There is no proposal that's been submitted to divide it into a street or anything else.
Well, yeah, but you got four under there. That's, that's 16 homes.
If they subdivide it, they will have to provide streets with curb gutter and sidewalk, drainage, streetlights, minimum lot sizes. All of that will be taken into account if the owner or whoever decides to subdivide it.
Well, they are kind of subdividing, and if they split it in lots.
They're not splitting it into lots. They're rezoning the entire tract.
But they have 1, 2, 3 lots. They have one that's 2 acres, and one that's 1.35, and then I don't, I can't recall the other one. That's what's, the letter I saw that was sent to people that got their letter, that's what it shows.
It shows that they have 4.6 acres in the entire tract. Does it have more than one parcel number? And I'm asking, I'm asking Jason.
Currently, that piece shows one parcel.
It only has one parcel.
The letter you sent out, whoever sent it out, shows a diagram of three lots.
Okay, hold on a second. Let me look at the rezoning. It does show that there are three tracks, but they have not submitted anything to show it to be divided into three tracks at this point. Today, all we are considering is rezoning the entire tract to SF2.
Well, what was the purpose of splitting it up in three lots, then?
I can't answer that for you because it hasn't been submitted to us. I don't know. It looks like in, in one, one lot would have access off of God Tyson Parkway, and the other two accesses, other two lots would probably have access off of Clyde Line, and they would have to have an access easement to the existing house, is what this looks like.
I'm wondering if it has...
I can only, I didn't send those letters. We did at the office. However, that may be a conceptual plan. We haven't submitted anything until this zoning was, was heard and either approved or not.
What is the conceptual plan?
I'd have to look at the letter.
I mean, I just, I told you, it does have three, it shows three tracks on their conceptual plan, but that has not been submitted yet.
Okay, now, my next question is, if this does go SF, that means that they can do eventually a subdivision that probably equates to 14 tracks, correct?
They could. If they can meet all the minimum requirements, they could do that, yes.
Will they be required to be on sewer?
If you get that kind of density, they probably would have to be. They can't get a septic system on something usually less than a lot, than, than an acre.
Okay, my next question is, along that track, that diagram you just found with three lots, it shows a road right beside the boundary. Is there not a setback for that?
There's always a setback. Once you establish a road, I mean, the, the SF2 will set the front, side, and rear setbacks, once it's rezoned SF2, to whatever the property lines are.
Will that become a city street if that goes in?
I'm sorry?
Will that become a city street if those many houses?
Not necessarily, because the city would have to accept it. And it would have to be built to city standards before we'd accept it as a street. And that hasn't been proposed.
I'm just kind of curious why we're going from agriculture to SF2. If they just want single families, why not SF or SF1?
They chose the SF2 for four units per acre, and the lot sizes, they're looking for a minimum lot size.
Exactly.
Okay?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. To the commission? This'd be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mr. Covert.
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
The rezoning passes 9-0.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes on the 23rd.
On the 23rd?
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes...
Yeah, we'll prepare the ordinance, and all of this will go to the city council on the 23rd meeting and be heard there as well. Okay? Thank you. Next section is conditional use. We have C21-02, Isabel and Dominic Merkey. Forgive me if I pronounced that wrong. 8727 East Wagon Wheel Road, conditional use for use units, horses kept in residential area and an SF1. There's also a variance for deviation of fence and acreage. B21-11, presented by Isabel and Dominic. How do you pronounce your last name?
Merkey.
Merkey. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you had it, you had it correct.
Yes. You want to tell us a little bit about this?
Sure. So we're here this evening to ask for a conditional use permit to have our horse at our new home that we just moved into last week. We are located in an area on East Wagon Wheel Road where I think half of our neighbors have horses. So it is, it's an area where there's a lot of agriculture. All the, all the lots around us are zoned A1. The previous owner of our house had to zone to SF1 to build the home. So we're just asking for special permission to meet the three-acre requirement. We are asking for a variance because our lot is 1.49 acres. But we are leasing that whole area, 2.7 acres, immediately behind our home from the city of Springdale, from the, the water department. We already have that under lease, so that's why we're here this evening.
Do you all want to read the staff comments? I couldn't hear you back there. Oh, okay. We're on the seat, the conditional use, and then the variance for the fence and acreage. So I was just looking for staff comments on it.
It's kind of a unique situation in that they are asking to be able to use the grazing area that's requirement of an SF1 zone for horses to be kept in that on property that is owned by the Springdale Water Utilities. And they have a signed agreement with the Springdale Water Utilities to lease the grazing area for a three-year time period?
Yes, and it automatically renews.
For how long?
It's one-year terms, and it, for three years, and then it automatically renews. It's just how the lease is written.
Okay. The ingress and egress is acceptable. The off-street parking is acceptable. The refuge is acceptable. Utilities. Now, will you be providing a water line to this location to water the horses?
We intend to put that on our property.
Okay. Screening and signs are not applicable. The yard requirements with this agreement meets the minimum standards as long as the applicant maintains this lease agreement with Springdale Water and Sewer. If that is terminated, then that would terminate the conditional use for the horses on that location. That's staff recommendations. It's kind of a unique situation.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience to the commission? We do a call for the vote for the conditional use.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Conditional use passes 9-0. Call for the votes. Actually, yeah, call for the votes on variance.
Talk about what you wanted to do with screening and fencing, or fencing instead of, you want to have a...
So the rule on the single-family residential is a three-foot fence limit, and we're gonna have a 4.5-foot fence.
And you also want to do it on the side of the house, which technically meets, is in the front yard?
I'm sorry.
Or did you decide to keep it at the front of your house to the south?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. You and I talked about two different things there. So basically, it is a, a fence requirement, allowing the fence to be four and a half feet. But it would not be actually in the front of the house, would it?
It's like, it's the side portion. I didn't know if that was considered the front, since it's visible as you drive by, but...
If it's from the front of the house, back, and you don't go in front of the, front of the house, you can do a four and a half-foot fence there.
Okay.
Okay. Go ahead and do the variance, just in case she decides to move it a little bit beyond the front edge of the house.
That was sort of the idea. We weren't quite sure.
Yeah, okay.
So she's staying from the front of the house back?
She's doing it as I understand.
Or is she going out to the tree line by the road?
Across here, right? In that area?
Yes, it's sort of, one option was to follow kind of along East Wagon Wheel, and then cut down by the side of our home, on the west side of our home. That's the portion that would be four and a half feet tall.
See, you would need to bring us a site plan for where you're gonna put the fence before you can get your...
We did. We submitted that.
Okay.
There were actually two drawings.
I didn't see it.
Is it in the packet?
No.
It's, it's not in the packet, but I don't know if anybody else drove by there. There's a pretty steep drop-off from Wagon Wheel down to their... There's a pretty steep drop-off from Wagon Wheel down to their, to their property, so I don't know that three-foot and four-and-a-half-foot really makes a difference, 'cause I don't know that you'd even notice it anyhow.
Just, you're staying, you're staying west of your house. Along the road, west of your house.
Correct.
So, your, your actual immediate front yard is not really...
It won't be in front of our home at all.
Well, but the area you submitted shows that it goes all the way almost out to the street.
Right. On the west side of our home, it cuts up to East Wagon Wheel and goes over, follows the road to that...
That's where they need, that's where they would need the variance.
Where they need the variance.
Right.
Got two different options here. She does need the variance.
Okay. So, this would be a call for the vote for a variance for the fence height from three feet to four-and-a-half feet. Call for the vote. Call for vote by Mr. Covert.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Heiler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Variance passes nine zero.
Steph will prepare the resolution that goes to council on the 23rd.
Do we have to appear for that meeting?
You need to be here.
Okay.
In case there are any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Next item, C-21-03 Maria Hernandez. Forty-four oh nine South Thompson Street, use units, mobile vending, and a C2. B-21-14 variance for deviation of food truck size, all presented by Carla Jimenez.
Hello.
Hi there.
I'm new at this, I'm not sure what I'm supposed to do.
Just tell us a little bit about what you're wanting to, to put here.
We're wanting to put a Mexican food truck.
Okay.
Basically, it will sit in the middle of that parking lot at forty-four oh seven.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and it's not gonna have any utilities hooked to it?
No.
It will be totally contained in the truck itself, and it's larger than the normal size of one. Did you bring a picture of it?
We did send pictures and with the file.
Is it forty-four oh seven or forty-four oh nine?
Well, it's actually going to be on forty-four oh seven. The property owner is the same.
Yeah, 'cause it's on the property next to it.
Conditional uses for forty-four oh nine.
Conditional use to be, needs to be for forty-four oh seven and forty-four oh nine, because they have to access it off of forty-four oh nine to get to it.
Okay. Just wanna make sure for the record that it's, so both forty-four oh seven and nine.
They did provide a parking plan that shows how it would meet all the parking requirements. There's not much use of that parking lot right now.
No.
There is screening, or there is trees along the edge that kinda blocks the lot, that's okay?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. The ingress and egress is acceptable, the off-street parking is acceptable, the, all the trash has to be contained on-site, you need to show how that's being taken care of. There is, will not be hooked to utilities, which makes it acceptable. Yard requirements and other space requirements are acceptable. It is generally compatible with the following requirements. Operate between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. No obstruction of parking spaces required for the operation of any other use on the site. Maintain on the site a minimum of three parking spaces designated for their use. If a health certificate is required, display the health certificate in a manner visible to customers. No obstruction of pedestrian or motor vehicle traffic flow. No obstruction of traffic signals or regulatory signs. No vending upon a public way. Sound, any device that produces a loud and raucous noise in violation of city ordinance or violates any other city ordinance in connection with the vending operation. Keep the vending site clean and free of paper or refuse of any kind generated from the operation of this business. All trash or debris accumulating within 20 feet of any vending stand needs to be collected and deposited into a trash container.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Point A read correctly?
My fingers. A? Can't operate between the hours of 10:00 AM and, yeah.
Just wanna make sure that's in the record there.
Right.
The way it reads right now, it's, you're gonna be operating between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM? I don't think so.
No. And I don't think we have a picture of the...
I did email them.
I saw a picture of it.
I saw a picture of it, but it didn't make it with this application. It is a large trailer?
Yes.
That has the, what kinda, what kinda food are you preparing?
Mexican food.
Okay, and it has a cooker on one end that extends over the connector to a truck and how you haul it, correct?
Yes. So, the extension from the size is basically our storage unit, where we will keep like cups and all, all of our items, salt, pepper, you know. That's what makes the vehicle, or the mobile truck, over the limit.
And it's, the truck has already been built with that contained on it?
Yes, ma'am.
And it was custom-built?
Yes.
What kinda signage are you putting on it?
It's gonna be vinyl signage. We're gonna wrap it with vinyl.
Okay, I think we need a copy of what it's gonna look like by the time we get to council with it, because we have not seen, the one I saw that was submitted previously was just a metal...
Yes, it's all white right now, but we're wrapping it with the logo just out to the side of the window where the picture is. That's where the logo will go, so people know that, that's the, the mobile truck.
Okay, it needs to be, we need a picture of what the mobile vending unit looks like and if it passes here, for sure by the time we get to council.
Okay.
When did you send the picture?
Um, let me check.
And who sent it?
I did, I sent it to Debbie Pounders. I have the pictures if you'd like to see them.
Well, we don't have any way for everybody to be able to see them.
Yeah. I put two side views and the rear view.
Okay.
I just had a quick question on the storage.
Uh-huh.
Is that part of the vending unit itself, or is it a separate unit?
No, it's welded onto the unit.
Okay.
Yes.
No, that's fine. I just, I thought I heard separate as far as it was a separate building or something like that.
Oh, no. Sorry.
Yeah, no, that's fine. 'Cause that would run another...
What's the total square footage of the unit itself?
A hundred and ninety-two. It's eight by twenty-four.
Eight by twenty-four.
Yes.
What kinda trucks pulling this thing?
A thirty-five-hundred Dodge Ram.
So, it's eight foot wide?
Yes.
Twenty-four foot long?
Yes.
Big food truck.
Any other comments? Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission.
Chairman, my only problem is that this wasn't there years ago when I was playing golf, 'cause a lot of my drives ended up over here. Would've been really convenient to grab lunch.
I kept golf again, Peyton.
What's your signature dish gonna be?
I don't think we have one yet. We will, we will do like very authentic Mexican food from where we are originally, which will be our weekly menu. We'll pick a day to kinda throw something in there and make it a little bit different. But we will have everything, fajitas, tacos, all of it. Taco Tuesday.
Peyton, if you start playing golf again out there, let us know, so we know not to go eat here.
Well, Mr. Compton may be sneaking over there, though.
Yeah. I don't want a golf ball drifting over and hitting me in the head on that one, so. So, the conditional use, this'll be a call for the vote. Call for the vote. Call for vote by Mr. Covert.
Peters? I think he's frozen.
Ben, can you hear us?
There.
Frozen.
Frozen.
It looks frozen, he's frozen up.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Austin.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, this passes eight zero.
Now, we need to call for the vote on the variance.
Call for votes for the variance. Call for the vote. Call for vote by Mr. Covert.
Heiler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters? He's not there.
Passes eight zero. All right. Anything they need to know as far as this going to...
Steph will prepare the resolution that goes to council on the 23rd.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And we'll just make sure you're, Debbie, you're able to look at the pictures.
Yeah, I'll get the pictures.
I can resend them.
Please do, if you don't mind. Thank you.
We moved into a new building and some days we got everything that we had before and some days we don't. We're still trying to figure all this out, so it's gonna be this way for a little while.
No, you can only use that excuse for so long, as far as you're...
I know, we've been there three weeks, two, three weeks now, so, yeah, okay.
I think this is the last meeting for that one, so.
Yeah.
All right, replats, 21-03 Nancy Hagan, lots fourteen and fifteen, Block Two, Carter Edition, presented by Steve Butcher.
Yeah, this, my name's Steve Butcher, representing Nancy Hagan. This is a couple of parcels on Young Street, kinda sorta back behind the Brahms there. And we had this rezoned from SF2 to MF4 last month. We had to move a property line between the two parcels to get the square footage that required to build a couple of duplexes, so what we're asking for is to have the replat approved of the two parcels to give us the square footage we need.
Thank you. Staff comments?
Please provide the legal description for all easements being dedicated via this plat. Remove quote "two family" from the MF4 building setbacks chart. Submit a list of adjacent property owners, I assume we got that. And need a resolution stating who has the authority to execute the certificate of transmittal ownership and ordinance. Is it in a individual's name or a company's?
It's in an individual's name, and I did submit those four items today.
And the plat has been revised as well.
Okay. We're good.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission.
This is a motion to approve subject to staff comments.
Move to approve subject to staff comments.
Motion by Dr. Compton?
Second.
Second by Mr. Austin?
David. It was Mr. David. It was him.
I'm sorry. It's hard to understand.
I prefer for somebody to think I was Mr. Austin, but he might want, might want the record right.
You like the tie-dye shirt he was wearing. So, I have a motion by Dr. Compton and a second by Mr. David.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Not there.
Tyler?
Yes.
This replat passes eight zero.
If you want this to go to council next Tuesday evening, the ordinance needs to be in our office by noon on Thursday.
Thank you.
I think that's all on the plats. Large-scale developments, L-21-05 Electric Avenue Town Homes, northwest corner of Electric Avenue and Oriole Street, presented by ESI.
Thank you for the chairman, Jason Apple, with ESI. This is on Electric Avenue, directly north of the Northwest Block Plant. We're proposing AD apartment units on eleven point nine acres. I'll answer any questions.
Staff comments?
Standard comments about utility companies and other city departments, underground utilities. Existing vegetation shown to be preserved and utilized toward perimeter landscaping requirements will be inspected at the time of CFO to confirm compliance. You're showing some trees and stuff down on, next to the, right behind that row of trees? Are you trying to preserve those? And what are they?
Along Electric?
Well, no, those, the circles that are behind it, are you preserving those?
Those, those trees are existing, yes.
Kinda trees are they? Okay.
They're, they're not.
I don't remember them being...
They're small trees.
Okay.
Yeah.
Provide shrub plantings at seven for every twenty-five linear feet along the front edge per chapter fifty-six. Provide dumpster foundation landscaping. Building foundations shall be planted with ornamental plant materials such as ornamental trees, flowering shrubs, and perennials, and ground cover. Provide exhibit indicating which areas are being counted towards the provided common space percentage. Did you provide that already?
Let me look at the landscape plan.
Okay, and then sidewalk connectivity for the full length of Kinsley Circle. Why does it not go out to Electric Avenue on the east side?
It will, or it can. It's not an issue.
You'll fix that?
Those slopes are approximately ten percent right through there, so it's a, this is steeper sidewalk than what ADA would allow. I believe that's why we did make the change.
But you've got enough room to take it out. It doesn't have to be right next to the street.
I agree.
If you could, if you could do connectivity to Electric Avenue, it needs connection on both ends, and on both sides. Provide pedestrian connection to the right-of-way on the eastern drive. Is it connected all the way through?
It's not, but it can be.
Okay, you'll fix that. On pedestrian walkways and sidewalks, a minimum of five feet. HVAC locations and screening methods, did you show any of those? Are they gonna be on the ground?
They're gonna be on the ground next to the unit, so we'll screen those.
Okay, that needs to be on the plan, too. Katie, do you have any comments?
Yes, I had a couple comments. Oh, it looked like the sidewalk along Electric, the green space, kinda varied, so I believe master street plan shows four foot. I'm not sure if there was a reason why it kinda got closer to the road in some places. And then, oh, and there was just something on the plans, I think a layer maybe got turned off, the trickle channel didn't show up. There was a note, but I couldn't actually see it.
And then your last comment says determine whether energy dissipation is required, is needed at line two.
Did y'all get that taken into? Oh, thank you, yes, that, that line to the pond is pretty steep, so I just, you may need some ripper or something, um, at the outlet.
No problem.
Any concerns?
No, I do have a question.
Okay.
We're showing this line of trees along Electric. I don't believe those are required, I was wanting to eliminate those.
Perimeter landscaping, is it not?
There's no parking area adjacent to the street in those locations. I, I don't mind to keep it along the building and, I mean, if we're trying to screen the stuff on, along the north, I mean, it's about thirty foot above it, so it's, the trees aren't really gonna screen that area.
Austin, can you help?
Sorry, Jason, can you specify which area you're talking, you're talking about a budding electric avenue?
Yeah, along Electric.
So that's gonna be the frontage landscaping.
But that's only required if it's along a, a parking lot, is that not correct?
No, that, that's just the frontage along the, the street. I don't think there's any specification on that.
Okay.
Anything else? Any questions or comments from the audience? Mission?
Motion subject to staff comments.
Motion subject staff comments. Motion by Mr. Covert?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tyler?
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
They're back, okay.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Large-scale passes eight zero?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, large-scale twenty-one dash zero-seven Springdale Moose Lodge, number eight seventy-seven Ritter Fiber Shelter, two fifteen West Apple Blossom Avenue, presented by Ritter Communications and Three Fifty-Six Solutions.
Uh, good evening, David Jordan here, uh, for, uh, Ritter Communications, Three Fifty-Six Solutions. Just, uh, we are a similar situation to what we did at Springdale, putting a, uh, fiber optic shelter there, which will be sitting on a, uh, concrete pad that will have a prefabricated building that, uh, will be sitting on that lot. We are, uh, we had the rear setback of twenty foot, uh, prior zoning that will be away from, and will be moving, uh, up, uh, into the, uh, existing twenty-five to twenty-five east that Ritter has, or fifty by fifty that, uh, Ritter has purchased. And so, uh, it's pretty self-planted, or it's on high ground, uh, it's out of the, uh, any of FEMA's, uh, flood zones, and so, uh, we're just looking for, uh, approval of us to move forward with this project.
Staff comments?
These are a little bit different. Uh, all comments from other utility companies and city departments must be addressed prior to approval of construction plans, and Katie, do you have anything on this one?
I'm sorry, I was muted. Uh, we'd like to know the finished floor elevation for that structure, it's on a concrete pad, is that correct?
Uh, yes, that is correct. Uh, it's just gonna be, uh, approximately, uh, eighteen inches above, uh, the, uh, uh, existing asphalt that's there now.
Okay, we'd just like to see that called out on the plan set, that would be all.
Okay, I can, I can do that.
Patsy, anything else?
Motion subject to staff comments?
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission, it's be a motion. Subject to staff comments?
Motion, uh, subject to staff comments.
Have a motion by Mr. David?
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert?
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Thank you very much, I'll get that, uh, changed on print and get that submitted, thank y'all very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Next large-scale twenty-one dash zero-eight Luther George Park, three hundred Park Street, presented by Spackman, Mossup Michaels, City of Springdale. Do we have anyone on?
Yes, we're on the Zoom call, can you hear us?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hi, this is Wes Michaels with, with Spackman Mossup Michaels, we're the landscape architects and, uh, leading this project, and this is a renovation of Luther George Park, um, Meadow and Park, uh, near downtown in East Emma, at the end of Water Street, between sort of downtown area and the, and Spring Creek and the Razorback Greenway. Um, this is a, a park design for a family park with, um, really designed around, uh, family gatherings, play, lots of picnic opportunities. Uh, there's the amphitheater, there's a restroom building, um, there's, there's a stage component, and there's a play area, as well as a walking path, um, creek overlook, and a creek seating area by Spring Creek, as you can see, sort of to the, to the south of the, of the plans. So, I guess we're here just to answer any questions, or if you need further explanation, we're happy to, um, I'm happy to dive in a little bit more.
Staff comments?
I can tell you we've been through a really, uh, intense design process to get this to this point, I think it's gonna be a great asset for downtown. We have the standard comments that everything has to be addressed with utility companies and other city departments. We met last week on a sewer line issue that I think we got all that worked out. There's not any other comments from planning, is there any other engineering comments?
We just need a couple more documents, um, a no-rise certification for the work in the creek, as well as a Corps of Engineers permit, which I think I already discussed with, um, them and they're working on.
Is that it?
I, I think Jill may wanna make a comment on this, Jill, you wanna comment on this? She's worked really hard on this too.
This will be the third park I've worked on, and by far it is going to be the most incredible and the most impactful, I think, to the community surrounding it. It will be, um, the largest outdoor green space in any downtown in Northwest Arkansas. It will be on the top five list of places people will visit when they come to Northwest Arkansas, I think. And it is midpoint of the Greenway, um, which is, um, going to become more and more significant. It already is very significant in our, in our region, but having a midpoint place to come and get on the Greenway with your, with your family, or if you're unfamiliar with the Greenway, it will be easier to access the Greenway in downtown Springdale via Luther George Park than any other place, um, there is, and I think it'll be the most beautiful part, um, definitely north of downtown Springdale and south when Dean's Trail is finished, that trail's gonna be beautiful also, so, we have a lot to be proud of, and I can't wait to, um, see this park be built. I will give you an update on the, um, the construction process, we are hopeful to break grant, have the funds all in place and ready to break ground on this project by the end of this year. So, any questions for me?
Will this serve as a, a trailhead for the master trail system at all, or?
Technically not a trailhead, but it will function as one.
There's parking, I mean, there's parking there, so it'll be very, it will be, it is easy, it'll be the fanciest trailhead of all of Northwest Arkansas, but you will be able to definitely access the trail and have parking there. And also, if you, you know, you wrap around, the Greenway wraps around the backside of Tyson, and then you have the Bank of America building, and there's, there's work being done to bring forward a plan to convert that into a really nice farmer's market that will complement Luther George Park, so that also will have additional parking and is right there, um, immediately adjacent to, uh, the Greenway.
And it is a major component of implementation of our downtown master plan.
Yes, yes, it is. Any other questions?
So what I saw in the packet was a lot of conceptual.
Well, you'll see the, the details that we, the, the packet is a hundred and how many pages?
A lot.
Yeah, a lot, like a hundred and thirty something pages. We didn't hope, uh, send all those to you so that you could, so that your iPads will still work, but there's designs on all that kind of stuff.
We're almost, we're almost at a hundred percent construction drawings. We're almost to the end, and the design team, I know, I know they're on the Zoom, but I'll say it anyway, they've done a really, really good job, they've been a, a pleasure to work with.
And the design of this project was paid for with a design excellence grant from the Walton Family Foundation, too.
See any variances that will?
No.
Come into play on this?
No.
Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission? It's be a motion, subject to staff comments? Motion subject staff comments? Motion by Mr. Covert?
Second.
Second by Mr. David?
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Large-scale passes, uh, eight zero. The only, I just had one comment on here is that I'm hearing that potential construction could start the end of the year. If it doesn't, and we get into February of next year, we'll have to bring it back here for additional renewal, just wanted to make sure that that was understood.
They can start breaking ground before the end of the year, we'll be fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that should be a goal in here, so we don't have to come back to this on, again on this.
I think that's what we're all shooting for.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that was brought up. Next item twenty-one dash zero-nine Edwards and J. Landscaping, eleven eighty-six Bulldog Avenue, presented by James Gertz.
Yes, this is, uh, James Gertz with EDA, uh, doing a six thousand square foot building at the end of this Bulldog Avenue cul-de-sac, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Staff comments?
Uh, standard comments of responding to all utilities and other city department comments, utility lines underground, you need to provide a pedestrian sidewalk connection to the right-of-way, and, uh, Katie, do you have anything?
No, I actually don't have anything on this one.
Anything else, Patsy?
No.
Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission? Be a motion, sub, subject to staff comments?
Uh, motion subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mr. David? Second? Second? Second by Mr. Covert?
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Large-scale passes eight zero. Thank you. Uh, Board of Adjustments, B-twenty-one dash zero-six Allen Hart, three sixty-five Old Wire Road, variance of deviation of minimum lot size width, and a SF-two presented by Allen Hart. Hi there.
Uh, we, we have currently a garage structure or a barn structure on our lot, and we are wanting to replace that with a new garage. Uh, we thought we'd take the opportunity to add a guest suite slash home office on, above that garage, and so to do that, we'd have to make that a secondary structure, and we meet all the requirements for secondary structure except for the minimum lot width along the, uh, frontage of the road. We don't ever plan to split the lot. This will be accessory to the, the main building.
You currently have ninety-five feet, and two lots would have to have a hundred and forty, but as, as they said, it's a really neat structure they have drawn to do at this location. Staff recommends the variance for the?
Okay.
Lot width.
Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission, it's be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mr. Parker?
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Variance passes eight zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next variance, B-twenty-one dash ten Karina Garcia Chavez, Gus Roofing, forty-two eleven Dixie Industrial Avenue, variance for deviation of pavement requirement, presented by Expedient Civil Engineering.
This is us.
It, it is. Can, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Uh, and I also have our construction manager Joey Stevens on the line as well, he's gonna, he's gonna walk you through some of the, the reasons why we're asking for the variance, cause I think I, I made my arguments at the last month's planning commission, and, you know, I didn't know as much of the specifics as maybe this gentleman can add, so with that, I'm gonna have Joey Stevens step in, he's via phone on my phone, so hopefully y'all can hear him, let him speak in.
Yeah, we can't hear him.
We can't hear it.
They can't hear you.
Jason, that's not working.
That's not working, I'm just gonna have to make the argument, Joey. So, um, last month, we brought this before the commission, and y'all approved the planning, or the, uh, large scale, and, uh, I think we had some work still to do on the elevations, which we're still working through, but we never did discuss the gravel paving and actually vote on that. And so, some of the reasons that we, uh, feel that we don't need to do gravel parking is, one, he's a roofing company, so he's gonna have a lot of skidsters and baccos and storage of asphalt shingles and that sort of thing that roofing companies have, and then with any potential, um, tenants that he has, cause he does have three additional spaces, they also could bring in that type of equipment, they could tear up the asphalt. We, we are on board to fence the gravel if that's an issue as far as a line of sight on all, all the sides with a six-foot privacy fence. But we just, you know, we're paving the front already for the parking space areas, and, and the back is not really for parking, it's more for the construction use of that business. There's not a lot of people that come and visit roofing company. They come, they, most roofing companies, you call them on the phone, and they're gonna, they're gonna come to your site, give you an estimate, and all that business is handled. They're on-site on, on the individual commercial buildings or residences. So those are some of the reasons why we're requesting the variance.
What kind of heavy equipment would a roofing operation need?
Well, we're thinking that they're gonna need, uh, skidsters, baccos, things like that.
But those all have rubber tires, right?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Okay, you're not gonna have any track equipment on this site?
Other than skidsters, skidsters sometimes have tracks on them, but.
They're small, I mean, you're, you're moving bundles of, of shingles.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Or Joey's saying maybe a haul-up dumpster like we'd see on a job site might be located there as well, might have trucks coming in and out there to unload those.
Well, those, those things happen all over, all kinds of construction sites, that's not unique to a, to a roofing place.
You know, also, Jason, it's four units, those tenants are gonna be subcontractors, so, you know, they're gonna have equipment as well.
Yeah, I, I mentioned that earlier, that each one, Joey liked to add that the other tenants would possibly have equipment on as well, depending on who he leases those out to. Yeah, contractors.
Okay, any other staff comments? Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Uh, here's the issue that I have, is that there is a roofing company directly across the street on Treadco. There's a Goodyear, there's a Miller Commercial Flooring. I don't think any of these people have, uh, or any of these locations have, um, anything other than pavement, asphalt or concrete. I, I, I don't understand why, why this particular roofing company would need a, a variance from that.
Well, I guess we don't understand why we have a company that's all up front, meaning back, it's an office where it's, I mean, that's what you need to tell them.
So, so what Joey's trying to explain to me, and I know y'all can't hear him, he's saying, he's just trying to wrap his brain around, you know, providing asphalt parking out front, but, you know, this is more of a warehouse, um, warehouse office type of development. I don't, not sure what the roofing company is across the way, but he's, one of the tenants is roofing, we have three other tenants that could possibly go in this, and I don't know with, you know, the ones you, you discussed earlier, or that same type of category as we are, we're a warehouse with one big roofing company and then three other potential customers.
Warehouses do not normally, warehouses is not something that we normally have variances for gravel parking areas, because if it's a warehouse.
I guess the point I was trying to make is that there is a mix of businesses, not just roofing companies, but other type of companies in this area, none of which have, have this. And it backs up to, it backs up, the, the rear of this property is on, backs up to residential. I guess I'm just trying to understand what? Nobody else? Nobody else is doing this, y- y- does that make sense?
Yeah.
Everybody, everyone else met the requirement, in other words, so I, I guess I just don't understand.
Cause there's no car driving in back of the warehouse, there's trucks and trailers and equipment, the car driving up front to the office storefront, sweeping metal.
And is this, um, is this for forty-two eleven or both forty-two eleven and forty-one fifty-nine?
It, it's forty-two eleven, forty-one fifty-nine is a vacant lot that our client also owns.
Okay, I'll just.
Joey would like to just add that, you know, most of the car-moving spots are up front. Uh, I don't know what those other businesses have, if they have cars moving around the backside of them or not, but this is gonna be for, you know, the backside of the building is mainly for that commercial use of types of, you know, baccos, skidsters, whatever our roofing company would put back there, and also the storage of asphalt shingles. But we think that the asphalt's gonna get torn up for those types of uses.
Peyton, did you have any other questions?
No, I don't, thank you.
Okay.
Chairman, I'm, I'm sorry, did you need to go to the audience first before I had a comment? Um, no, I already did.
Okay.
I, I may just be misunderstanding, but much like Peyton, I, this is no different to me than a Lowe's or Home Depot, I mean, every contractor and their brother pulls up there on concrete or asphalt every day with whatever they have to do their business, so I, I don't, I don't necessarily see the need for gravel here.
We're not a Lowe's, we're a roofing company, we don't make a billion dollars here.
I'm sorry? I heard that. I'm sorry, could you repeat what he said, I couldn't quite hear it.
Oh, he was just saying that we're not a Lowe's or a Home Depot.
Don't make a billion dollars.
It's not, no, we don't make the money that Home Depot or Lowe's makes, but.
Reminder is, the cost is not. Reminder is, the cost is not considered to be a hardship.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? This be a call for the vote. Call for the vote. Call for vote by Mr. Covert.
Peters?
No.
Heiler?
No.
Austin?
No.
Covert?
No.
David?
No.
Mueller?
No.
Parker?
No.
Parsley?
No.
This variance does not pass.
Uh, there is, there is no appeal of the variance of the city council, your only appeal on this is through circuit court.
No favor, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Thank you. Next variance, B twenty-one dash thirteen Juan Arahu, thirty-one eighty-seven Julio Roads. Variance for deviation of rear setback from thirty-five to three feet, presented by Francisca and Juan Arahu.
Hello? Yes, um
Can you pull that mic down, so, just so we can hear you a little bit better?
Yes, um, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Um, so we are asking for a three-feet variance for the rear setback um, of this, it looks like a patio, but it's still not yet to be finished. It's supposed to be enclosed, cause we, it's supposed to be a storage unit.
Okay, are, are you asking for the variance to be where it goes within three feet of the fence, or from thirty-five feet to thirty-two?
It's from thirty-five to two. I mean, they're thirty-five to two, sorry, I didn't do that.
You wanna be that close to the back, to the, to the rear yard?
Correct, um, we weren't, we weren't informed correctly to what the zoning was, cause we, we thought we were considered rural area, which the zoning is a little bit different. And so, we did, we do acknowledge the fact that we did not ask for a permit, and that's the reason why we're here. So technically, our fence did not sit there about a year and a half, about, I would say about a couple months. They did a new subdivision right behind our backyard, so there was still, I would say, how many feet? Like a six feet more into that fence, which is the neighbor's patio used to be our fence, our fence used to sit there. The reason why it got torn down is because, uh, they, the construction company, the owner that bought that, uh, land said that that was part of his property, and so he destroyed our fence with no consent. And, um, that's why I also presented a couple of papers showing that we had to go into a civil lawsuit for that. The reasoning why we, we went through that, because we, when we bought the home, it had, um, on, when we went down to the city, they said that our, uh, our, our line was right where that fence was, that old fence that's been up for like forty years. So, that's the reasoning why, and so this, uh, uh, these structures were built already before they started building.
Okay, the city doesn't set property boundaries, but anyway, um, so you have built in the last couple of years a porch structure without a permit. Uh, the building inspection saying this, this structure is to be completely removed. There is an old shed that needs to be, that's missing roofing material in need of major repair. The gazebo structure to the west of the porch is the most recent built structure, and it also is in the setbacks and close to the porch structure, this structure is to be completely removed. Ed, do you have any additional comments on this one?
Uh, the, the primary issue here is that, um, you got a five-foot fire separation distance. You're not allowed to build anything within five feet of the property line per fire code, which that doesn't become a zoning issue, then it becomes a fire code issue. And, the building that's built there wouldn't meet the, the, the closer, we do build closer, but there has to be a one-hour fire barrier, and there's overhang issues that have to go with that. So that's the biggest issue, so we wouldn't, us and the fire department definitely would oppose anything less than five feet, cause we'd still have to take it down because it's still too close. The, we do get those situations, as you see the building that's all in the corner here. It, that was built before it was in the city, um, also the tin roof structure, that was before, I'm pretty sure looking back to, I looked back to the photos back to about, um, two thousand and four, those structures were there, so they'd been there for quite some time. And, and in those cases, we just usually have to live with those structures. But this is a new structure that's, that's just been built since, you know, the city annexed that area over there. It was annexed, what, about nineteen ninety, I wanna say, nineteen eighty-eight?
Sounds right.
So, and I'm pretty sure that as old as that tin roof structure, it was there at that time.
So the porch structure and the gazebo are the ones that, they're newest, that has to be at least five foot?
They would require a permit, and they, they did not get one. So, they have to be five feet away at least. The others would also almost fall into the old two-hundred-foot portable building coordinates, which we've changed to a hundred and twenty now.
So maybe it's just me, but I'm a little confused as far as, is this because we have existing buildings out of compliance? Or are there new structures that you're asking to be able to put in here as well? Or is it both?
That's the part that was confused, and, um, they were at first, that, when we got that letter and we called, um, what was his name?
Tom.
Tom, yes, he said that we needed to tear everything down, and we said, well, those structures have been there for years. And then that's when he, he came to a, a point that he's like, well, never mind, you don't have to tear them down. And it's still violating, as he said, um, the code of, like, the fire code. Um, and so that's why we're here as well, because they did say when we hired that attorney that we would have problems with the city, because those buildings, they were not within, you know, a certain feet or distance from the fence. So that's why we were all confused as well, is like, yes, we have that, that little old shed that's, that needs repair, and then there's also one to the corner, um, that is also there as well. So there's actually the two old ones, and then the two structures that they built.
Well, according to the letter that we have from the building department in December, the, uh, old shed is in need of repair, and I think that's the one you're talking about that's been there a long time. The porch structure to the west of the old shed has been built without any permits and built in the setbacks. This structure is to be completely removed, and the gazebo structure to the west of the porch structure is the most recently built structure, and is also in the setbacks and too close to the porch structure. This structure is to be completely removed. So what's remaining if you remove what the building inspection needs to be, said needs to be removed?
It would still, the two shed, the old shed, I would say, if, I'm looking at my house from this view, the one to the right, and then that old shed, so there would still be two, um, two sheds there, like, still violating the code.
Okay, I, I, I can't give you any clarification on this, because we need some kind of a drawing to see what we're talking about. I'm not sure I understand.
Well, just looking at, from the little image on there, um, so that little old shed is that little blue one right there to the right, and so our house sits there, so there would still be two remaining structures. Like even if we were, had, if we had to tear the new structures, there would still be two existing ones.
Are these, uh, sheds on a permanent foundation?
The, the two, the, the new ones that, those new structures that they built, yes, they are in permanent foundation.
So the blue sheds and the other?
The other ones? No.
Okay.
The other two structures are pole, pole structures, so it's not really a foundation, but they are set into the ground.
You, you see where I was going with that, I mean, potentially, so those could not be moved easily?
They could not be easily moved.
Okay.
I, I just have a quick question. Is your, your new property line, is it where it looks like there was a fence in the, um, south part of the property? Is that your new property line?
Mm-hmm.
But your, this picture right here shows your old property line.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, any other staff comments?
I don't have anything else.
Any questions or comments from the audience? This be a call for the vote.
I just have a quick question, so what we're, what we're getting ready to vote on is what the building department's letter is asking to be removed, or are we asking for all buildings to be removed?
Well, in general, it's asking for a rear setback across the, what I'm seeing, what I'm understanding is that the south portion of the property is asking for a variance for deviation of rear setback from thirty-five feet to three feet. Doesn't specify any particular area, so it's the whole thing.
And, and just to follow up, but the comments from the fire, there's something about can't go past five foot?
Fire code.
Okay.
The variance that is being requested is to go down to three feet across the entire south portion.
So, can, can I say one thing? If we if this does not pass, this variance, do all the buildings have to be torn down?
That's, that's what I was asking, I'm sorry, I didn't phrase it correctly.
Maybe I can give some clarity here. There's two older existing buildings on the property, they would not have to get a building permit to be constructed. The other two newer buildings needed a building permit to be constructed. At that time, we would have noticed that they were within the thirty-five-foot setback, and we would have been here for that. Because they are built now, they're gonna have to be removed. And unfortunately, they're the two nicest of the four buildings. But the two older buildings can't stay where they're at, and they can be, um, beautified. They can be, they can add metal and roof back to them if they need them, because they've been there for such a long time.
Is there a permit for those buildings, or is it just something that was grandfathered in before it was annexed into the city?
They go way back to the paper time, and I wouldn't know if there was ever anything granted.
If it was in the county, there were no permits for it.
Yeah, the, the oldest building was probably in the county, and there was no permit. And to tell you the truth, the one in the corner was probably built by the farmer at the time, and they may have cut the property line next to it at the time.
So those are more grandfathered in in that regard? Okay, but, from a community engagement perspective, uh, based on their condition, is there a violation there?
The one definitely doesn't meet the, the maintenance code. The, the lean-to shed, um, it, it could use some maintenance, it's getting there, it's a, it's a metal steel metal building, corrugated metal building. Its biggest problem is it's going, the neighbors aren't gonna like it, cause it's right over the fence, and it sticks over top of the fence into that, that neighborhood. But, there's nothing we can do from an illegal standpoint.
So what we're voting on is the variance down to three feet, that would be impactful to the newer structures. The older ones, that's really more of a code enforcement piece. Thank you.
Where did this complaint generate from?
I'm not aware, but I would assume it's probably from the subdivision to the south.
I don't, I don't know either. I don't know where it came from.
This be a call for the vote. Call for the vote. Call for the vote by Mr. Covert.
Heiler?
No.
Austin?
No.
Covert?
No.
David?
No.
Mueller?
No.
Parker?
No.
Parsley?
No.
Peters?
No.
This, uh, variance does not pass eight zero.
Variance cannot be, uh, appealed to city council, your only recourse is through the circuit court.
Does that make sense, as far as?
Buildings will need to be removed.
Just one more question, it's kind of, we've gone through a lot the past couple months. So, who would we speak to in order to have the, like, the amount of time we have to destroy these structures? Since there is, like, um, uh, the bottom part is gonna be very hard to remove, that one's kind of like, it's kind of like cement on the floor, so we don't know if we can leave that there and just destroy the whole thing, or what, what do we need to do in that?
Need to get with the buildings department, yeah. Just get with the buildings department, and they'll help you through that part, process of it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't think we had as far as the tabled item, Aiden Soto Rivera.
That one will have to be resubmitted for us to consider now.
So, planning director report?
Uh, the planning, the city council approved the replats for Harbor Meadows Phase twenty-three, West, the final plat for West Elm Estates, and the replat of the, uh, Casio store on Robinson. They approved the conditional use for the mobile vending unit, which was a pet wash on Emmett Street. They approved the rezonings that were submitted on County Line Road from A-one to SF-one and MF-twelve, on Forty-eighth Street from A-one to C-two, on the southwest corner of Don Tyson Boulevard and Parkway Circle from A-one to C-two, on South Fifty-sixth from A-one to MF-twenty-four. There were amendments to the PUD district for Pier Springdale, the rezoning on Young Street, SF-two to MF-four, the, um, uh, on North Thompson from SF-two to MF-four, and the Hilton Road PUD from A-one and SF-two to PUD. They approved a sidewalk waiver for the Highway one-twelve for West Elm Estates. They, um, vacated, uh, utility easements in connection with Casey's. And the next work session is set for February the sixteenth at five-thirty. With all the things that went on last year, and with the COVID and stuff, we didn't really do a good review of the comprehensive land use plan, and this is the year for the master street plan, so we kind of need to figure out how we're gonna move forward and get some of those things looked at this, this, this year. The, uh, new iPads have been ordered for the planning commission members, and they will be, you'll be contacted whenever they come in, and so your iPad can be updated.
And then
And the planning office has moved to two oh six South Blair Street. We're there, we're functioning pretty well. Computer service is kind of slow still, and we don't have all of our files, and Debbie's kind of just, not, not all the files are there that she can touch and keeping track of, so it's a little bit stressful. We'll get all that taken care of though, so.
Still meets in the, in the multipurpose room here, or?
Probably meet down here.
Okay.
I don't know, we'll have to work that out, we'll let you know. Uh, the, uh, health department approval, is the mayor still here? I don't know if it allows, how many we can have in the multipurpose room, because we had to get new health department approvals for, to meet the new assembly requirements, so I'm not sure how that's gonna work, so. I don't have anything else.
Chairman, before we finish up, I'd like to appreciate Councilman Powell, Councilman Foodreus for being with us tonight. Appreciate y'all coming.
Councilman Flores is on Zoom.
Oh, excellent, Councilman Flores, welcome.
We do appreciate it, uh, I was actually gonna make that comment, but thank you very much on it, so, um, it's very helpful for us to be able to communicate with the city council on it, so. All right, thank you guys, appreciate your patience this evening, meeting adjourned.